We now call this meeting to order. If you could please rise, if you are able, and pay attention to Councilmember Cohen for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call on our good friend Reverend Barry Fieker to give the invocation. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good evening. Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for the day that you gave us today. We thank you for the opportunities in a great city, in the heartland of America. We thank you for great leaders and an opportunity to just continue to hear from you, to follow you, and to in turn bless you as you bless us. We ask for your guidance in the meeting tonight, ask that inspiration will be found. We ask that a unity will be achieved and that we will be able to see our community continue to come together as it has been. Thank you for those who lead here. Thank you for their families, and thank you for the opportunity before us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and for justice for all.
We have a quick presentation here, and it's kind of a surprise. So, one of the things that we celebrate in this community is service. And if you have ever served as a public official in a city council role, in a local elected role, you know that you really are not doing this because of the money. You're doing this because you care about your community. I firmly believe, especially after being here for, you know, quite over four years, five years now, that there is no deeper service to your community than to serve at this level. We don't get the opportunity to go home and maybe go to the grocery store. We are cohabiting with our citizens. We're available. We are there every single day. Our families go to school with your families. And in order for you to just do this, you really have to love your community. And with that, there has been a group of individuals that feels very fitting to celebrate the longest standing member in this governing body. Ms. Sylvia Ortiz, if you could please come front.
I'm second, Bones.
I think you look beautiful. So, on behalf of your colleagues and Liz, your team, we just want to say thank you for all of the years of service that you have given the city of Topeka. And the team would just like to present you with this. I'm sure that everybody has wonderful things to say about you and the collaboration that we've had the opportunity to have with you. But I get this privilege to just present this to you on their behalf. And if you would just like to say a few words to your community about, you know, why you've loved them for so long.
Thank you. Wow. Wow, this is a surprise. I started not to come tonight. No. First, I want to say thank you. It's an honor and a privilege not only to serve my district, but the city of Topeka, where I was born and raised. And I love Topeka. I'm not going anywhere. I don't mean that on the council. I just mean, you know, move. I tell people it's a great place to live and raise your families. We have it all right here. We really do. And if we want more, we can just go an hour away or two hours away. So, thank you. I love helping people. That's what I love to do. And I love to help them in any way that I can. And when I started, I said, oh, I'll do one term. Then one term turned into two terms, and then so on. But there's so many good people out there. And Topeka is a giving city. And they want to do, and they want to do for our hometown. And they don't know what to do. But there's a lot of people that want to do. And my heart goes out to the youth. It really does. And those are our citizens of tomorrow. And so, that's why I advocate for them strongly, because we're getting older. And as you can see, your bar place is going to reserve a place for me. Bill will make sure of that, you know. But it's just awesome to help them, and it's awesome, Mayor, that you have brought the old and the young together. And you've really done that. And I thank you for that, because that's just wonderful. But I'm speechless. I don't feel deserving. I'm...
10 years.
2005. April of 2005, so it'll be 13 years, yes. It doesn't seem like that long until you guys start changing crazy things on me. And I said, no, that's not how we do it. But it's been wonderful to see Topeka grow. It's been wonderful to see the departments grow, and it's wonderful to see our youth growing. And that's what a city's all about, is all of us working together. So, I want to thank each and every one of you guys for this. This was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have Desiree Moniz. She's the Principal Consultant with Impact KCK. She is here tonight to talk about program, Impact KCK, that is being considered for this area. Its initial, or its purpose, she'll explain better, but generally it's to target homeless youth. So, Desiree?
Hello. It's an honor to be here today. Thank you for having me. Had the privilege over the last five months to meet with many of the city leaders, mayor, deputy mayor, and really talk about something that's happened in Wyandotte County that's quite remarkable, that we want to share with you here in Topeka. I'd like to start tonight with a video. We started in 2014, 15, as a collaborative meeting together. And when the mayor did a call to action in 2015 for our 1,400 homeless children, we said yes. And we began to work together as a community, cross-sector collaborative effort, to address homelessness. We're in partnership here in Wyandotte County in a collaborative, and we take a collective impact approach. We thought, well, let's just work on removing barriers and come together and see how much we could get done under one roof. And we called that Impact Wednesday. We have worked together three years and have reduced homelessness by 50% here in Wyandotte County. And it's our goal to end homelessness by 2020 and be working in our school district at enrollment, addressing prevention. For us, walking side by side with our kids, to be our future business owners, teachers, doctors, lawyers in our community, and giving them the best place for them to thrive and to be all that they're created to be, is really what gets us up every day and why our mission is in front of us. I am Desiree Moniz, and I want to see children in Wyandotte thrive. We started our journey in 2014. Our nonprofit is focused on community development. We had a desire to look at a collective impact approach, addressing complex social issues. Stanford released a report in 2011 that was very intriguing to me, working in social services. And I really wanted to see if this approach would be effective in beginning to resolve the issues in our community. Wyandotte County is the poorest county in the state of Kansas, and we had the highest level of teen pregnancy, high school dropout rates, our housing, poorest quality. We had, on the scale of 105 on the index for the state of Kansas that year, we ranked 105 out of 105 on all 18 of those indexes. And so, in 2014, when our mayor did a call to action, our agencies wanted to do something that was a little bit different, that could look at, could we mobilize in such a way that we began to move the needle in our county? And our superintendent got on board with the mayor, and the agency said yes, and we decided to do this with collective impact. As Avenue of Life CEO, we are the backbone agency. Collective impact requires a backbone agency to support its initiative. And we began the journey with zero funding. What we did have was the talent, the social capital around the table. We had cross-sector collaborative partners that each had something to bring to the table. And what we determined was, if we just began to take action and bring to the table what each one of us had, that we would begin to move the needle in some way. So, that began our journey in 2014. August 15th of 15 was our first Impact Wednesday. We all came under one roof. It is a one-stop shop where all agencies go mobile, and they come into the backbone agency, and they begin to work and address the barriers that our families have. Our families are referred to us by our school district. Wyandotte County had 1,400 homeless children in 2014. Topeka has approximately 560 in the county, in the school district. And when we began that journey, it looked like a large mountain. And when we agreed as a community that we would end it in five years, many thought that it could not be done. But the power of us working together, bringing our various gifts together and our resources together with one strategy, we all maintained our separate organizations, but together we agreed, let's end homelessness. And the journey began. We were assessed by UMKC last year, and the data shows that there was over a 50% reduction by halfway through, 2.5 years into our program. We've reduced homelessness by 50% in Wyandotte County. We have 700 homeless kids left to impact in our community. We began with 250 of the 1,400 were unaccompanied youth, and we currently have 89 of those children that are remaining that still need to be impacted. So, we're looking at 702 years to impact our kids. And we continue to adapt our program as a community to be innovative and to be solution-based, so that as new issues come up, from funding to resources, that we tackle that as a team. We have a 95% housing success rate. Our families stay housed, which is unusual in our industry. And really, that comes from giving a family the type of social capital that each and every one of us need. We have that in our churches, in our community, in our families. But a lot of our families in poverty do not have that social capital. So, when we come around a family, from trauma care therapists, to dentists, to healthcare workers, to case managers, financial coaches, employment coaches, and they come onto a team around a family, you give that family power, and you give them solutions to challenges that will come along their journey. We stay with our children to graduation, and we're on the journey to be in the school district at prevention by 2020. It's something that we'd like to share. And Topeka and the state of Kansas has invested in coaching and training to be made available to the city of Topeka. And we've had the privilege of meeting with your city leaders, your superintendent, DCF, your COC, and the city. We have truly met some remarkable individuals that want to see something happen and have asked if we would invest and train and be a part of collective impact happening here in Topeka. So, we just wanted to come and share with you the journey that has begun about five months ago. But we start on the 31st of January more strategically. We will meet as a community. 100 agencies will meet together, and we will begin to do our strategic planning as a community on next steps, so that we can look at a two-, three-year plan to end homelessness with our students here in our school district. So, I wanted to share that with you and let you know what a privilege it is to be here in the community. I'd love to come back and share with you what happens, the impact that we have together here in Topeka. So, thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Do we have any questions from the governing body? Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. This is very exciting. Could you briefly name, you talked about a backbone agency, and then it's a total of 100 agencies that are partnering?
That are coming to the initial training.
Okay.
Along the journey, agencies will enter and exit as funding and resources are there, or as the strategy needs various agencies to be a part of the collective. Well, as we begin our training, we have 100 slots for the initial training.
Well, and it's good for everybody to know. Who is the backbone agency, and could you identify, just so we've got a picture, what some of the core, steady partners are?
So, the commitment time will be done on the 31st of January. We've met with city partners to cast vision throughout your community to see if, in fact, the community wanted to move forward, and it is something that many of your leaders are interested in doing. The backbone will be selected on the 31st by the community.
My question was, I thought so. Who in KCK? Who's your backbone agency in KCK?
Oh, I'm sorry. I am the backbone. It's Avenue of Life.
Okay.
And we're the backbone agency in KCK. And so, what the state has funded is for our team to come and to do full training with your backbone. We will train your case managers on a navigation-style approach to collective impact. We will work with the backbone on growing the collaborative and modifying and initiating that program here in Topeka.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is awesome. I've said time and time before that we have homeless youth and homeless high school people sleeping out of their cars. I've endured that. I've been invited to your meeting. I work for DCF Legal, and they are excited about this, and this sounds so great. And it's just ironic, because we have a camping ordinance with homeless that is now in our committee. And so, I was sharing with them and telling them. But a lot of the people that are coming are also people that are in our camping ordinance. So, it looks like everybody's on board. And that's the great thing about Topeka, is that you got everybody that'll come. You know, Grace Med was on your list. They gave me some notes and stuff, and they said Sarah had been. I don't know who else is other representative. This is going to be very, very good for all of us, from the kids, and then it will spin off into the adults. So, thank you.
You're welcome. The same initiative can be done with adults and with our 18- to 24-year-olds as well. So, it'll be exciting to start on the journey with children.
If I may, ma'am.
Yes, absolutely.
But it was my understanding that they don't stop at 18, that they will continue on until they're 24, to get them to be citizens that are employed or educated. Is that correct?
That's what we're doing in Wyandotte, is making sure that it's to career or college, and that we're staying with them along the journey.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. It was a privilege to have him speak at the meeting you guys held at the State School Board. It wasn't a conference, but I really enjoyed going to that. One question I did have on this is, do you have an average cost per student for the program yet?
Yes, we're averaging at Avenue of Life around $4,500 per family that we're investing in. So, we take the entire family as a whole. We're investing in the parents. Our goal is our children to graduation, but the investment in the parents is averaging around $4,500 at year four in each family we're investing in.
Is that annually, or for the life of the program?
It's so far the life of the program we're tracking.
Wow.
Yes. We have 360 families that have been housed with a 95% success rate.
For only $4,500. Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no additional questions, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having us.
We now move on to the roll call.
Mayor Daley's left.
Here, barely.
Councilmember Siller.
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Padilla.
Here.
Jensen.
President.
Mays.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
And Lesser.
Here.
All right. We now move on to item three, appointments, if the clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Margot Rangel to the City of Topeka Citizens Advisory Council for an expired term ending December 31, 2021.
We have heard the item and the agenda, the appointment. We have the pleasure of the body.
Yes, I am happy to move approval, please, of Ms. Rangel.
We have Councilmember Emerson, and the deputy mayor had also raised his hand. Not a shortage of hands raised here at this moment. If there's no additional discussion, we would now proceed with voting. The mayor does not vote.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The motion passes. Ms. Rangel, if you could please rise. Margot, as everybody knows, was an employee of the city of Topeka for many years, and she is an avid supporter of this community. She currently is working at the Topeka Community Public Library, and Topeka County County Public Library. And while she was working at the mayor's office, she expressed an interest and worked a lot with Councilwoman Emerson, she's in his district, and issues that pertain to the neighborhoods. So, it's really exciting to see her come back on a volunteer mode and just continue contributing to our community. So, Margot, thank you so much for your service. We now move on to the consent agenda, if the clerk would read.
A, our minutes of the regular meeting are December 18, 2018, and there's a list of applications before you, and staff is recommending approval.
We have the consent agenda in front of us. What is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion for approval by Councilman Cohen. We have a second by deputy mayor. Additional comments or discussion? Seeing none, we proceed with votes.
We have 10 yes.
Ten having voted yes, the motion passes. I am being looked upon by the deputy mayor telling me to leave my seat, and I will probably do so later on in the meeting. We now move on to item B, if the city clerk would read.
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout relating to the city of Topeka's legislative agenda for the 2019 legislative session.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, we went through the items that we consider to be important relative to the upcoming legislative session. Before you, you have a resolution that was prepared for your consideration. It has many individual items, but it also references the League of Kansas Municipalities' public policy that lists a longer list of things that affect cities and that we would be interested in pursuing as they came up at the various points within the session. So, with that, we'd seek approval.
Councilwoman Heller?
Don't you approve?
We have a motion for approval. We have a second by the deputy mayor. Additional comments, questions with regards to the legislative agenda? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have 10 yes.
Ten having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item C, if the clerk would read.
B is approval of the proposed revisions to governing body rules and procedures.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, we've gone through three reviews of this, and so I think we have it in a position where we can seek approval at this point. But obviously, if there are any last-minute additions or amendments, we would hear those this time.
So, prior to having any discussion, as we typically do, we have one individual signed up for public comment on the... I'm so sorry. I'm in the wrong place.
No, you're right.
Yeah, okay. I should leave. Mr. Leibetter, if you would like to make your remarks?
Having been before this body many times and other public entities as well, I'm always concerned about free speech, and I'm always concerned about citizen input. And I had heard rumors that we were going to shrink this footprint of allowing the public to speak, and there were concerns that people were talking too long. And I said, my gosh, I've seen presentations that'll put you to sleep without any kind of medications, and they're not by the public. And so, I was wondering where the concern was. And I find out that, you know, looking at these documents, I think you pretty much left public comment in place. I will say that over the years, the public has brought forth great ideas down here, including the Washburn Sales Tax, was actually talked about first in this meeting about, well, it was over 15 years ago, because I brought it forward. We've certainly commended the police force for the fantastic job they have done, including in High Crest. There's been a lot of good public comments. Public comments at budget time about the need for more productivity. Many, many, pretty smart people have come down here and talked to you about the needs to deal with housing codes and all of that. And I will tell you that without public comments, I don't think we would have moved as far as we have as a community. Doesn't mean we don't need to move a lot farther. But I will tell you that public comments has been an integral part of this government, and including reforms to JDO and other bodies. I can't really think of something you would want to curtail less than public comment. So, I was concerned. I came down here to just make sure that, you know, the public had adequate time to speak, would be given extensions if you want to so grant. And you always have the right to not give those extensions, but you have the right to give those extensions, too. And one thing you might remember about the public is, they're not paid either. In fact, they're paid less than you. So, I'm not, you know, castigating salaries here, but when it comes to public service, I don't know anybody that does more for the public than some of the volunteers in this community. And I'm not talking about anybody in particular, but they do keep an eye on what's going on. They express their opinions. The only concern I've raised about public comment that I wish we would change, and we haven't done it, is at budget time and in those budget talks, some of the people cannot get it all out in four minutes. There's a number of issues that need to be talked about. And one thing I like about the county side, when we talk at budgets, there really is no time limit, but I would tell the public, when you're public speaking, you know, after five minutes, you're putting people to sleep. And so, you're really not making any points. But sometimes, to develop the record, I talk about that as attorneys, we've got to have a little bit more time to put all of those concerns and issues on the record. And I think once that's done, then it's in your hands to deal with it and fix the problem. And I certainly want to commend the long-suffering Sylvia Ortiz, who's been here longer than any of you. She's heard many of my speeches, and she also appointed me to Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, and the county certainly wants to thank you for that. And she also appointed me the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, and the county certainly wants to thank you for that. And John Knight in particular. And so I'm just saying a thank you for them, since they're not here. And with that, that's it. Thank you.
So, yes, Councilwoman Heller.
I think that the staff, in my look at it, did a good job of distilling what the council was saying last time. And I'm in support of the changes and would move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Heller. We have a second by Councilwoman Clear. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed with voting.
We have 10 yes.
Ten having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item C, if the clerk would read.
C is an ordinance introduced by city manager Brent Trout renaming the planning department and authorizing fee waivers, amending City of Topeka Code Section 230-090, 250-010, and 020, 1420-060, subsection 109.6, 1450-5150, and repealing sections 250-030, 040, and 060.
City manager.
Thank you, mayor. Governing body, we went through the ordinance changes last time. And through that process, there was a recommended change that was presented by Councilwoman Heller. And if you look at 109.6.2, we did make some additional changes, which are highlighted in the red, to address some of those concerns. And so the section now reads, "The city manager is authorized to consider fee waivers in cases of emergency situations and affordable or charitable housing projects where materials and labor are donated." And then it's also referenced in another section with basically the same, with the same language. So that was the change that was made from the last time that we discussed this item.
Yes. Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Trout, you probably, I think I copied you on the question I had for Mr. Finder on that item. And I certainly don't have a problem with you being the one that does that. However, my understanding was that you would, it was calling for you to establish a policy of when to waive and when not. But that's not how it reads. We took out the "policy" word. It just says a waiver, like you're going to waive every, everything, every single one that comes across.
Sure, I understand that. When we looked at the situation, we do expect to still establish a policy that will guide me in that. Even though it isn't there in the code, the intention is, is that a policy would be created in order to guide me in that decision-making process. So even though it was removed, there still is the intention that a policy needs to be developed in order to be able to guide me in those decisions.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And a follow-up question I'd also had asked, and I apologize, I ran out of time today to call you guys and discuss this first. But there's also the thought that, the way it reads, it's kind of vague if it's any material labor is donated to a project or all. And I believe it was our intent, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought it was our intent when all materials or labor are donated. Is that correct?
Well, I think that's what we have done in the past. And that's, the policy will be developed in order to be able to reflect the steps that have been taken in the past regarding granting waivers. And so that's what we intend to follow as a continued guideline. But the idea that there may be some projects that, it may not be all, but it still may be worthy for us to be a part of that project in order to support it, in order to assist that it occur.
And is it your thought that, what I'm, I guess what I'm concerned about is that you start getting a flood of applications for this. Do you think there's sufficient language in here to protect against that?
I think there is. I think that, given the history that we've had, it's been infrequent, and I think we have a good history. Mr. Finder could cover how often he's been asked of him in the past. But my information from him is that it's infrequent. Even slight modifications to the policy will still utilize the general purpose of looking at most projects, it's all. But I think this provides us some flexibility, and I think, you know, we can report back to you as it's being used and determine if it's something that is getting out of hand at any point. We can come back and modify and look at, and adjusting the changes.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from the body? Okay, seeing none, what is the pleasure of the body? Deputy mayor?
Motion's over.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a second by Councilmember Cohen. Before we enter the voting, I will say that this is an ordinary ordinance, which means that the mayor does not vote in this specific instance. If there is no comments or questions, we proceed with voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item D, if the clerk would read.
D is an ordinance introduced by city manager Brent Trout creating Chapter 18.275 of the Topeka Municipal Code concerning non-residential design standards.
City manager.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight, governing body, we'll bring back an item that was referred back to the Planning Commission in order for their consideration of art as an item that would be included as they look at design standards. Director Finder will come forward and give an update on the recommendation that came from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, governing body. That is correct. We, as was stated, we did take this back to the Planning Commission for consideration. They did two things, which are before you, or they are recommending two things that are before you. One is to include art as one of those alternative compliance measures that developers could use to comply with our design guidelines. And then two, we've also added it to a eligible list of architectural details that somebody could use as part of their design, as part of their facade. If they integrated art, that would be an eligible detail. You have to have so many architectural details in your building now, and so that would count if they did that. So those were the two changes they made and recommended for your approval. Thank you for any questions.
What is, Councilwoman Heller?
I do not have a question, I have a comment. I'm the person who raised that issue. And just for what it's worth, had absolutely nothing to do with this going through. It wasn't needed, and I think you nailed it. I think it's great.
If I may, I didn't...
You collectively nailed it.
I didn't particularly nail it, but I do want to, I do want to give a shout out to Dan Warner, our planning manager, who worked with, we also met with Arts Connect and Sarah Fazell. There was also someone else, it's escaping my mind, but we did reach out to a couple people. So, and thank you for pointing us in the right direction.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is that in the form of a motion?
Sure, I'm moved to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second by the deputy mayor, who has taken every second tonight.
He's trying to work his way in your chair.
So if there's no further comments or questions, we proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
Ten having voted yes, the motion passes. And to the people watching at home, I will say that I will not expose you to hearing me talk in this horrid voice and hearing me cough. I really wanted to make sure that I was here for the first meeting of the year. And at this point in time, sinus infection is winning. And I will pass it on to deputy mayor to continue with the meeting.
Thank you, your honor. On to non-action items. Item A, if the clerk would read.
A is a discussion on granted and non-exclusive franchise agreement to X2Net Systems Incorporated to construct and maintain its facilities in the public right-of-way as a wireless infrastructure provider.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Governing body, tonight, we'll hear a presentation from Mary Feeny regarding the franchise agreement with X2Net Systems to answer, and then answer any questions that you may have regarding the franchise agreement as is proposed. Mary?
Good evening, governing body, staff. Yeah, this is fine. What you have before you is a franchise agreement. X2Net is a wireless infrastructure provider, and they would like access to our right-of-way. And to do that is through a franchise agreement. The picture that you see will kind of describe what they want to do. They want to come into the right-of-way. They will attach their antenna and equipment cabinets to utility poles. Most of them will probably be Westar poles, because the city doesn't own its own light poles. But to do this, they need a franchise agreement. This is similar to mobility, which this governing body approved a couple of years ago. What they do is they'll put this equipment on, and then they will rent it out to Sprint and Verizon and T-Mobile. And then we will get 5% of the rent payments quarterly. And that hopefully will compensate us for the use of the right-of-way. In your packet, you've got the FAQs, and I hope I covered most of the questions that you might have. The bottom line is state and federal law require the city to provide access to these infrastructure providers. There will probably be many of them coming into the city as 5G becomes very popular. Right now, we're a 4G world. So that essentially means if you want to download a movie from Netflix, it'll take maybe 20 minutes. With 5G, it'll take about 60 seconds. So this is the wave of the future, and this is, these are the, these are the shock troops that are going to come in and start that process. X2Net is in several Kansas cities, Overland Park, Leewood, Manhattan. The agreement is basically, I use that, the template in those cities for ours, as well as for mobility, which you approved a couple of years ago. So tonight, we're just discussing them. If you have any questions, then next week, I'll come back and ask for your approval.
I am particularly excited about 5G as a nerd. Mary, my, one question I have for you is, is there a particular reason why we have to approve every single one of these? Can we not just do a blanket agreement for this type of technology within a certain type of parameters, that sort of thing?
Well, state law requires a franchise agreement for each entity.
Okay.
So, no, we can't.
Okay. Good enough for me. Ms. Clear.
How far apart will the antennas be? Does it want to block every pole?
We don't really know at this point. If this franchise agreement is approved, then they will start the permitting process. And at that point, we'll find out exactly where they want to locate, and they have to comply with our rules and regulations and our technical standards. So I can't answer that question now.
Part of that is driven by density. One antenna can serve X number of people. And so when you have more than that amount of people, then you need more antennas, obviously. So your follow-up question?
Yes. So you said 5% of the gross. Any idea how much that is?
I have no idea.
Is it hundreds, thousands, or is it 200?
I don't know, because I don't know who they're going to lease to, and they keep that very, kind of on the down-low. So I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Other question? Yes, sir, Mr. Lester.
Thank you. Hi, Mary. This all looks good. I do have one question that, quite frankly, is not really specific to this entity. But one thing that I had made a priority moving forward for me was franchise agreements. And I wanted to see if, since it's a discussion item, if you could take a look at section four, which is due, is, I won't read it verbatim, but basically on line 163, where it starts about removal due to public project.
Yes.
And quite frankly, from the extent of really, you know, what this grantee is going to do, this really isn't going to apply. But I'd like to start at least having a discussion about putting inside our franchise agreements. We hold, you know, we hold our contractors accountable if they have a street project that they're behind, et cetera, et cetera. And where we read, for instance, on line 184, it says, "Any damages suffered by the city or its contractor as a result of grantee's failure to timely relocate or adjust its facilities shall be borne by grantee." Kind of tough to determine what our cities, you know, what our actual damages would be. However, when we had like our project at 21st and Wanamaker, that was the result of utilities not being moved in a timely manner. Was a great detriment to our, to the public, as well as a lot of those businesses that were there. And, you know, in that case, had the delay been due to Bettis Asphalt, whoever it was, they would have been assessed to liquidate the damages. And what I'm getting at here is I'd like somewhere in there where we talk about those damages, that we actually get some specific language in there of a penalty if the 180 days, you know, it says we have to give them a minimum of 180 days. And if we do provide that notice and that is not done, I'd like for us to look at some specific language that can be put in there that we hold those, them accountable for that as well, no different than we would a private contractor. And I don't, you don't have to answer right now, we can talk about it later. But I'm wanting to look forward to doing this in, you know, as our franchise agreements come up for renewal and so forth as well.
Okay.
This just gets to be the guinea pig, that's the first one.
And that may be a problem. Both state and federal law really limit what we can do with these telecoms.
Sure.
And I don't know, I mean, if I have to go back to the negotiating table with X2Net to try and address damages, I don't know how far I'm going to get. Because all of the agreements with X2Net don't address this. They just cite the statutory language, which allows us to ask for damages. But it doesn't get into the details of how much we could ask for. I'd rather not get into that. I don't think, I mean, we haven't had a situation, at least with a telecom, where this has been really a problem. But we are restricted by both federal and state law. We cannot do anything that will inhibit the ability of the telecom and the wireless service provider to essentially access the right-of-way and put their equipment up. And I can see them coming back and saying, "You're trying to inhibit our ability to operate," which is a violation of federal and state law.
Yeah. I'm not an attorney, obviously. I'd just like to see us do some due diligence in that area, because I don't want to see our public or our businesses deal with the same type of situation that we dealt with on 21st and Wanamaker, you know. And there, again, we hold our private contractors by performance bond, by payment bond, by all those different things. And then we just are assessing liquid damages on the JADO project in regards to East Topeka Learning Center.
Right.
So we sure are happy to do it with private, you know, individuals like that. So on the franchises, I'd just like to see us look at it, and this may not be the right one as far as those languages. But if you could humor me, that'd be great.
Okay.
All right.
That will do. Any other questions?
Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I can't see my light. Mary, if it gets damaged, who will be responsible for that?
They will. They have to repair any damage.
So we don't have to do any maintenance or...
That's correct.
Okay. Or repairs.
It's all on the X2Net, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Heller.
Thank you. I did not have time to read through that 170-page or whatever it was document yet. I'll try. But I have some, and it sounds like if X2Net's a good company and they're next in line, or they manage to get second in line, then obviously, this would go through. But I, as somebody else, I'm trying to figure out where we're going with this. Because it seemed like if there wasn't enough poles, they could put up another pole.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
So when, let's say there's five more providers coming in behind them that want to do this, do we end up with a whole bunch of those little service boxes up one pole? Or do we end up with a little forest of holes down the street? Do you know?
Yes, we could have a forest of poles on a street.
Well, I think, you know, even in terms of legislative agenda or something, I think of two things that have happened recently. One is Westar coming in wherever they wanted with those huge towers that were so ugly, marching down whatever it is, Gage or Fair Lawn in your district, for instance. And we seemed helpless about that. I also recently had a fairly, fairly hearty, let's just say, complaint from a constituent who was dismayed to see those little poles from AT&amp;T that are sticking up all over the place, and they stick up about four feet, and they're white, and then they have an orange cap on them. And she felt like they were just ugly and out of place. And I inquired about those. I think I understand what their two options are. But is there a way that we can include them, for instance, in either the design ordinances that we have? Or some way to have some say about what it looks like and where they put it?
Yes, we have the right to adopt aesthetic standards, and Planning Department is working on those
Okay.
at this point. So hopefully, that'll address some of your concerns. But again, federal law is very, very specific about what cities can and cannot do. But we are going down that road.
The design, good.
Yes. Yes.
If I could follow up with one more question, back, back to the, the poles. I don't know how big a company, the one that we did two years ago was, or how big a company this one is, but is our way, if we don't want a forest of poles, and they can't just go up and down, kind of like cicadas in the summer, then can we just stop? Is that what we do, is we say, "Sorry, we don't want any more poles. We don't have the capacity for any more providers," and we just stop?
That's a good question. I don't know whether I can answer that. Again, federal law pretty much dictates what we can and cannot do.
But we don't have, I guess I'm looking ahead, because it didn't take long to go from 4G to 5G, and I don't know where we're going. Brendan may have a better idea. But if that means we, we've got so much stuff hanging on these poles that we need new poles every time, and so on, pretty soon, it's going to be out of control. And if there was a way to think ahead on that, or for us to realize that when we, when somebody needed so many boxes that they needed a new pole, we were going to say no.
You're voicing concerns that have been expressed
Okay.
From cities throughout Kansas.
Uh huh.
And I, I don't know what the answer is, because, again, federal law really restricts the ability for cities to do anything that will inhibit the ability of these telecoms to come into our right-of-way.
Except that we can say no.
It's hard to say no.
Okay.
We have to have a health and safety reason for doing it. So it's possible.
Well, then, if I could speak to the city manager, I hope that if, if, if all the cities, if you're aware that all the cities are dealing with that, if, if there would be a way that Topeka could join in through LKM or whatever, our various colleagues, and ask our congressional delegation to see what we can do. I realize that's a, a tough request, but that's, that's impossible, that's, we don't want that to happen.
Oh, I, I understand that. Interestingly enough, legislation has been introduced that would preempt cities from even approving these franchise agreements. So that would remove one more city control over these wireless service providers, so...
Well, even better reason to get ahead of, or try. Thank you so much.
Okay.
One of the arguments that I've read that the industry's putting out with all these small cells is that they're going to try and get rid of the big old massive towers over time, and just have a whole bunch of these little antennas instead of a few super tall massive towers. Now, whether or not that will happen in our lifetimes, I don't know, but that's kind of the trade-off, is rather than having a huge massive tower that you can see for miles, you have a whole bunch of little tiny ones that are on top of existing telephone poles, so...
And, and that's okay, but we've all looked at what's on the roof of some tall buildings.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I don't want to see that right outside somebody's bedroom window, you know, driving down the street.
Yep. The only comment I would make on the design standards is, I've been to cities where they required them all to look like trees, and they look worse than just regular cellphone towers. So, yes, we got another comment.
The only, the only other thing I was going to address to Councilwoman Hillard is, I did, had read through the contract, at least the majority, if it, with towers, it doesn't make much sense, but the franchise agreement does state that as much of the infrastructure that can be underground needs to, has to be underground as well.
Yes.
So...
Oh, so that's an option.
That's the preference, yes. We've got that in our agreement. They don't have to do it, though.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Meany.
Okay.
Onto Item B, if the clerk could read.
B is discussion on the 2018 standard traffic ordinance, STO, and local amendments.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Governing body, tonight, we have Karan Thadini is going to come forward and talk to us about both the standard traffic ordinance and also the Uniform Public Offense Code, and the consideration of that at the next meeting. So Karan, if you please come forward.
Good evening, Governing Body. Steph, how are you? I'm, I'm here with, to discuss with you the adoption of the 2018 version of the standard traffic ordinance. Item C is also linked to this, because it's the Uniform Public Code, which are the misdemeanor part of the ordinance. The standard traffic is the traffic offenses. The main reason for this to come before you is because in 2021, the Department of Justice is going to be doing away with their old crime reporting system and moving over to a new system. And in order for TPD to be compliant with that new system, they have to adopt the most latest versions of the STO and the UPOC. The 2018 versions are the latest versions of those documents. They are usually released by the Kansas League of Municipalities every year in July, and so this is something that we're going to have to do on a yearly basis moving forward. The one question I had with Mr. Luther Gonya, the TPD legal advisor, is, why are we doing this now? Can we hold it off six months until the 2019 versions come out, in an effort to maybe, you know, lessen the cost? Because when we do adopt these things, we have to get new books. The response was, "TPD has done everything that they've needed to do on their end to become compliant with this new system. The adoption of these latest ordinances is sort of the final step." It's important to note that this proposed adoption will not cause any drastic changes. It's sort of the status quo. The city right now currently operates under the 2015 version of those documents. We haven't adopted them on a yearly basis, because there haven't been any substantive changes. So right now, we're, we're operating under the 2015 version of the standard traffic ordinance and the Uniform Public Code.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor. Is it Mr. Thadini?
Thadani.
Thadani.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here and presenting this.
No, you're welcome.
I did have one question. You said there will be a cost to this. Can you, can you tell me what that cost might be? And one of the reasons I ask, it said in our, as I was reviewing this last week, it said there won't be a budgetary impact to the city.
It'll be a minimal impact. I think these books run $15 to $20. In my office, in the prosecutor's office, we probably have eight copies, so eight times two would be 16. The court will be provided with a few copies, and then maybe the legal department upstairs would have a copy. So in the grand scheme of things, I think the impact would be under $500.
Okay. I'm, I'm just surprised in that Luther would be opposed to doing it now. I, I thought maybe it was going to be thousands of dollars.
Luther's on board to do it now. I was trying to hold off six months.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have to do it again so soon.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood that.
No, no problem.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple questions I asked earlier of the city manager. If anybody wanted to check these, it's helpful to be able to look at them online, and we were not provided links. But I think since then, the city manager not only can share with us some links if people want to see them, as well as, as long as we get them online, all we need is one copy, and I think it's pretty cheap, and I think he's got the price.
If I could, yes, they were found, Brenda Younger found them in other cities that have adopted already. And so I have passed those links on. It was Manhattan and Newton have them. Once we approve these, and we can then make the purchase and be able to put them on our own website, so individuals would be able to refer to them. So once...
It's just $50 to put it on the city website, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So that'll be a small amount for us. And then, of course, I know that staff wants to have them available to them in their office in order to be able to access them much simpler and refer to them.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to make note for the body that they are online, the 2015 versions are online right now on the legal department page, so you can click under the ones that we currently operate under. And then, once we adopt these, the 2018s will go on. But Brenda, as a city clerk, has to keep copies, physical copies in her office, so there will be hard copies.
Yes, ma'am.
Then, one of the things that's been happening is, as the complete streets laws and the bicycling laws have changed, those have come up each time. We used to do these once a year, so it's only been recently that we didn't. And so I had, first not realizing I didn't have any links, shot it out to the bicycling people to check, and if there, there are two items that if we could follow up on would be good. One is that there is a KSA 8-1590D is about parallel paths, and it requires them, and I didn't have time to look it up, but it's in conflict with, I think it says if there is a path, you have to be on it. And in Topeka, we're, we're encouraging people to be on the street, so that they're not riding with people, even if it's a bike pedal path, or at least that they have that option. And so in the past, we did do an amendment on that. So if we could consider, if you could look at that, and we could consider that again. And then, also, there was a, the statute changed last year, or the year before, let's It may still be in a bill, but HB 2170 and SS 8-1592, that has to do with requiring that there be, if I, if I recall correctly, it requires that you have reflectors on bike pedals. And if you buy one at Kmart, they all have them. But if you buy a used bike, it may not. And a lot of the, the upscale bicyclists change out their pedals for racing pedals and things like that, and those don't have reflectors. And so they pointed that out as a, as a conflict. So if, if there's a way to address that, those are the two that I had.
Most definitely, we can take a look into that. And if I wasn't clear, any of our previous ordinances, deleting or adding sections, will stay the same. So if, like you said, if that one you discussed first, the KSA...
The parallel path.
Correct. If it's been deleted before, that would be the, that's the, the recommendation now.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's it.
Other questions, comments? Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it. Take care.
Item C, if the clerk could read.
C is discussion on the 2018 Uniform Public Offense Code, UPOC, and local amendments.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any specific questions related to this particular item? Karan is covering this.
All right. Seeing none. Onto announcements. Mr. City Manager. Sorry, should we read the, yeah, agenda?
The January 15th preliminary agenda. On the consent agenda, we have two special event ordinances and a noise exception. On the action items, we will have an ordinance for Extonet Systems franchise agreement. We'll have an ordinance for a zoning change for McDonald's Corporation at 3117 Southwest Topeka Boulevard. We'll have an ordinance on a zoning change for 30, on a located at, property located at 3041 Northwest US Highway 24. And then we will have an ordinance relating to annexing land for Sherwood Village subdivision and corresponding final plat, that's located at 2400 Southwest Indian Hills Road. We will have the election of the deputy mayor and the Jeto Board members, charter ordinance concerning for the TMTA mill levy, and then we'll have discussion and public hearing for the Sunfire Foundation industrial records lines.
Excellent. Now, Mr. City Manager.
I have no announcements this evening.
Excellent. Mr. Cohen, onto you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just want to tell everybody Happy New Year, and thank you.
Big Mike?
I'm good.
Excellent. Ms. Heller?
Happy New Year as well. Don't hug people as much as you usually do. Maybe you won't catch this cold.
Oh, dear. Ms. Claire.
Exciting things in North Topeka. A lot of new growth over there, economic development, so make sure and check it out.
Ranking Member Ortiz.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me not to hug Karen. That's why I shook your hand. I've been reminded several times. I, I need to stop giving hugs. But I, I did forget to thank Liz, and I wanted to thank you, Liz, for all your hard work and effort, and keeping this a secret. We'll, we'll have a talk about that. This is beautiful. This is very beautiful, and I, and I just want to thank you guys for that. That will sit on my desk at home and collect dust there. I thought Karen would mention this, but since she didn't, I will. A Trojan has passed away that was very big in our community, David Douglas, and he had his funeral on Saturday. Karen was there, did a nice, nice letter, and, and you know, I'm sitting there, and, and David was a vice president, correct, of Old Town. It's, it's amazing, you know, we were not really, we were kind of honorary, you know, Trojans are kind of honorary, not like Scots, but, and it's, it's amazing to see us grow older and to grow wiser, and then to, to come back and start doing things for your, your community. So, so I had to, I had to chuckle at that. But as I was sitting there, I was thinking, you know, of all the things that we do as council representatives, we attend funerals, we go to weddings, I mean, just, just all the different things that people expect us to do, you know. So it was good to see you there, Karen. David was a man that always had a smile and a hug. That's just who we are. We're huggers, even though we've been advised that we've got to slow down on the hugs, you know.
I forgot to do funerals.
Yeah. And so Old Town will, will miss him and, and his work, and hopefully, somebody will pick up the gavel and continue on. Happy New Year.
Thank you again for my plaque.
Mr. Emerson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Even though Councilwoman Ortiz has no idea what my name is, it's been an honor to be up here with you, and it's a well-deserved honor. The, the love you have for people in Topeka and your district is obvious, so thank you for that, and Happy New Year.
Mr. McDea.
I just want to thank Councilwoman Ortiz for helping out and delivering the packages with Liz, for the families that we adopted during Christmas. It was a nice thing to do. I enjoyed doing that. And I just hope everybody has enjoyed their holiday. Congratulations to my fellows, Councilwoman, Councilman Lesser and Councilman May. This is our one-year anniversary. I've enjoyed it, and thank you very much.
I too want to extend my congratulations to you, Councilwoman Ortiz. It's been an honor to serve with you. The babe report, "My lovely bride tells me our child is now the size of a moose," and she is done. So this, this is the homestretch for us, her due date this year of the month, so we're getting into, in any day now, so it's been, it's been quite the experience, and I want to thank you all for your support in that. So with that, Happy New Year, and we move on to public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, onto public comment. Donna Anderson.
My name's Donna Anderson. I was here about six weeks ago, kind of had that deer-in-the-headlight look and didn't do too well. Hope to do better this evening. September 2018, city engineer right-of-way employee Alan Collins was sent to my house to inquire if I would sell my property to the city. October 2018, Mr. Collins and his supervisor, Tom Allen, both came to my house, and we worked out the details of said transaction. November 2018, I had a contract with the city of Topeka for $150,000. It stated that I would have the money from the sale of my property by the end of December 2018. Sometime between the 6th and the 8th of December, both of those city employee gentlemen showed up with bad news. No explanation as to why, just the city changed its mind. That's known as breach of contract. $150,000 now is going to be a bargain, in contrast to what my price will be in a year. If an eminent domain move is attempted, you will have me, my son, the Pickrell brothers, and David Horn, and a legal battle with the city of Topeka, because you have promised all three of us property owners the same thing. Just a personal statement from me before I ask my last three questions. It has been blatantly obvious to me for the last two decades, because I've lived there since 2000, but for the last three or four decades, that the Oakland Waste Treatment Plant is out of room. I've asked several people in public service positions, direct questions, and for a short while, I got honest answers. Now I get no answers. I don't even get a return phone call. I've been told that everyone's been instructed not to speak to me. I didn't think that that was how a democracy was supposed to work. Three questions for all of you. One, who authorized Alan Collins and Tom Allen to make the offer of $150,000 for my property? property? They didn't come there of their own volition. Two, why did they make this offer? Hmm, for the fun of it? And three, what's going on over there? There's been an awful lot of frantic cleaning up. I have pictures of all of it. Contamination problems, buffer zone violations, or what? You tell me, please. I'm really interested. I'm supposed to close on the house in three days, that you were supposed to give me the money for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. There is a need for one executive session, if the city attorney would give the parameters?
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 20 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privilege matters as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: members of the governing body, city manager Brent Trout, deputy city manager Doug Gerber, administrative and financial services director Nick Hawkins, deputy city attorney Mary Feeney, and myself. No action will be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion and second. All those in favor, yes. Opposed, vote no. And having you voted yes, the motion is approved. We will take a 10-minute recess and go into the session when the room is clear. The executive session has ended, but no action taken. There is a need to extend the executive session with the same parameters. Is there a motion?
Not to exceed 10.
Not to exceed 10? Okay. The motion is second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Well, that's apparently... All right, we'll go into the, the session when the room is clear. The executive session has ended with no action taken. There is a need to extend the executive session under the same parameters for an additional 10 minutes. Is there a motion?
No.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We will go into executive session when the room is clear. Yeah, yeah, I'm ready. The executive session has ended with no action taken. There being no further business for the body, we are adjourned.